I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Governor's Federal, Chapter 55. Day of motion to certify by the agenda, motion by Robert, second by Linda, all four to that.
Robert, thank you for the seats that you have us in up here, God, and we pray, Lord, that you would use this to your glory. And we pray for those coming up here tonight, especially, Lord, for those that bring their kids up here for the first time or their kids up here for their very first school experience. Lord, just pray, God, that we would be a blessing to them in many ways. And we pray, Lord, that our administration staff and all that would support our teachers and be a blessing to them. And that we would be a blessing to the administration. And be with our kids, be with our safety this year, God. Just lay your hand on this district and keep us safe, protect us in all that we do. We ask the same in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Zuba Republic for which it stands, one nation for their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my birthday's side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state for their God, one indivisible.
Any other for him? I like it, okay. So go on to item three, consider approval of the consent agenda. Any questions for Dr. McCullough or anybody on that consent agenda? Questions will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. Liam, I think Robert's seconded it. All four, seven oh. Moving to our action items. Item A, consider approval of proposed 2022-2023 tax rate.
You should have in front of you a copy of our notice that we will be putting in the newspaper this week, pending your approval. We expect the meeting to be on August the 30th, 15. Our rates have gone down again this year. You know, when they implemented the MCR two years ago, that drops where our rate has to be, that and our values. So our values went up and our MCR went down. So our maximum MNO rate can be .8546, which is about four cents lower than last year. And then our debt rate maximum will be .16042, which is about five cents lower than last year. So all in all, our rate, total rate will go down by nine cents for the taxpayer. This form goes into a lot of information for the taxpayer. That's the main reason that we have to post these, so they can see the values, the difference from one year to the next. They can see our bonded indebtedness and the balance we have on that. They can compare last year's rate to this year's rate. And then there's also a rate to maintain, and that lists the rate that we would have to impose to be able to maintain the same level of funding as previous year. And it compares the average residence, and then it shows our fund balance, and lists a notice of a voter approval rate. So what we're requesting is the maximum that we can adopt without having a voter election, a voter approval rate. Any questions on that?
You said it's going down?
It is, about nine cents.
So it's going down?
It's going down, nine cents.
Making sure, nine cents?
It is, nine cents.
Okay.
Four cents on the MNO side and five cents on the INS side, on the debt side. And I'll go on and move on to the next item. Y'all can go over all this if you want to, just make a motion on each item. You also have your budgets. These are things that we'll be proposing at the August 30th meeting for adoption. This is same form you've seen in the past, is what was being presented when I came here. And it compares the current budget where we are to the proposed budget for next year, and with some explanations out to the side of some of the functions, some of the bigger functions that had movement. This would have been in your packet. Does anybody have any questions that we might could answer?
What you're referring to, if you're in your, if you're looking, she's on the, I think it's listed on the last one, 2223 General Operating Budget Proposal. That's what you're referring to.
Should be the general operating, the food service and the debt service, but the general operating is the one that is in smaller print, has the explanations out to the side of it. If you'll, if you'll notice on our current budget, it projects us to get dip into fund balance by 130,000. That is the 130,000 that we amended the budget for back in September for items that we had per, we had submitted purchase orders for in the previous year, and they had not shipped or had not, the bus was the big one. And so what we did was, we had to cancel that PO in our, in that budget, in the 21 budget, rolled that money into fund balance because we didn't actually spend it, and then turn around and amend it back into this fund balance. So even though it shows us dipping in, it's for the previous year's expenses. Any questions? Ready to move on to the food service? There are three budgets that we require to adopt, so we have our operating, our food service and our debt service. Food service, you'll notice, we're projecting an impact on fund balance. I'll tell you that at some point in the year, we'll be coming back to amend the budget to eat into fund balance even more. The food service budget is primarily a federal fund. It's funded by the National School Lunch Program. And they have a cap on how much you can hold in fund balance, and we have reached that cap. So we, we actually reached it last year. So we had in the budget to spend about $50,000 on a big walk-in freezer, freezer, I guess. And it has not arrived. So, yeah, we, we needed it actually to hit this budget before the end of August, but it's not going to. So we'll be doing the same thing. We'll be doing amendment in September, roll that in so we can make that purchase. But we're going to be adding to fund balance this year. So all the effort we made, about $50,000 piece of equipment to get it, to get our fund balance back in line, we're going to be adding to it, so we're going to need to spend again, which is a good problem to have. Typically, food service runs in red, you know, you try to avoid that. We've kind of got the opposite problem right now. We're, we're, our fund balance is holding above our cap. So we'll look at, our food service department will look at some needs in the dish, you know, in their kitchens, and we'll be, and hit some more purchases next year. And then the debt service, it's pretty straightforward. Basically, our bond payment requirement for the year, what we expect to be on revenue from taxes and from, a little bit from the state. Any questions on any of those? The only other handout I have, and I don't know that it was in the packet, but it should have been at your place when you say, out here, is this colorful thing right here. This is also a requirement from the state for us to post on our website. As soon as you vote to propose a budget hearing, we will post this on the website. It shows the public, our current budget compared to what our proposed budget is. And they break it down by different, different categories of the budget, like instruction, general administration and so forth. And it also has per pupil expenditure. You can compare from one year to the next. So we'll put this on the website tomorrow.
So, have on this, the per pupil expenditure at the top line up there, 11, says 5292 on the yellow.
Function 11?
Yeah. Is that like total, what, that's instruction, is that?
Yes.
What it costs that to educate a student?
That's classrooms, everything involved in the classroom.
Is that salaries and all included?
Salaries, supplies, travel, you know, any, any kind of fees for teachers to attend trainings, that kind of thing. Anything having to do with, with classroom instruction.
Okay, so that's about an estimate of what it costs us per year to educate one student?
Out of this budget.
Out of this budget.
Yeah. We have, we have several grants. They pick up some of the instructional pieces too. So this is strictly looking at our general operating budget. And one of the reasons, you saw in the explanation, one of the reasons that this year increased in that function for us is that we are absorbing back some salaries that the Ezra Grant held for us. You know, we, we shifted some salaries over when we got the Ezra Grant, and so we're doing a two-year pull. We're pulling part of those back this year, we'll rest them back next year, pulling the brands back.
What does the state give us about for our student, 6,000 and something per year?
6,060 dollars, plus weights, weights on different programs. So that's the basic allotment. And then you get a weighted funding on CTE courses, SAD, valuable. Everything has a way to depending, you know. They, they estimate an additional cost for running that program or whatever, and educating that student. So the basic allotment, and then you build, you build the rates on top of that.
Okay. Okay, questions? Okay.
Put it A and B together, take two, two different motions on A and B.
So do we need to do two different motions, or can we do it just like this, like the session right here?
Two, two separate motions, please.
Okay. So we need a motion for the, so it's recommended that we approve the proposed tax rate of, and the first for the maintenance and operation is .85460, is that correct? We need a motion for that. Motion made by Linda, seconded by Leanne, all four. Seven oh, to adopt that one?
Do INS together?
What I mean by two separate motions is, for A is one motion on the tax rate, MNO and INS. And the other was to have the public meeting date on August 30th.
Okay.
That's two, sorry.
Okay. So, we're just going to dissolve that then, since that was, so, I'm going to read this out on this. So I need a motion that we, as a board, approve the proposed tax rate of 1.01502, which is .85460 for MNO, and .16042 for INS. Motion made by Linda, seconded by Leanne, all four. That's seven oh. Okay. And then the next one then is for the public hearing day, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve Tuesday, August 30th, 2022, at 5:15 PM for the public hearing meeting day to receive input and discuss and adopt the 2022-2023 budget and tax rate. Go have a second.
Second.
Second by Linda, all four. Seven oh. That was, I don't know, A and B, I got you there, I was looking at something else beside. Item C, consider approval of agreement for the purchase of attendance credit, Chapter 48 funding, and the delegate contractual authority to the superintendent to obligate Mount Vernon SD under Chapter 49.
So you, Miss Bailey, during the last two years, we received a letter from the state, same thing, saying that kind of got our attention there the first year for sure, in regard to saying we were, Chapter 49, and we won't have to send it back, but we looked at it on the notice, it shows a balance of zero. Same thing last year, same thing this year. Just that we're, as we know, we're always kind of right there on the cusp of being that. So in preparation for that, they have us go ahead and make the decision in regard to what we're going to do. I do believe that each year what we have done is chosen option three. And that would be my recommendation for us to get this year. We just have to, we have to fill out that forms and that back to the state, that if we were, if we go into Chapter 49, that is what we're going to be doing, which in essence is basically returning money back to the state.
Okay. I'm not finding, you say option three? Option three, okay. Somebody want to make that motion that we purchase average, that the attendance credits as provided by the super, or subchapter D, option three? Motion's made by Robert. Seconded by Josh, all four. Seven oh. Item B, consider approval of property and casualty insurance renewal. Final quote from RMC of Texas.
As you remember back, we got a, we took out, or we received bids, went out for bids, back up, we went out for bids back in June, I think, actually, RMC was the only company to, to bid. And the final, final quote for us here moving into the year is 307,989. And we've been with them for, how many years, a long time? A little before Pam and I got here. We've looked, we've looked at some of, we, the deal with Tazby, if you go with Tazby now, you have to take out workers comp with them as well. They won't do property casualty buy and sell, we don't work with it. And so we were, I think we're still in a final year with administrative services, so Tazby wouldn't even quote it. And we tried to get another company out of Metroplex, and ended up not quoting it either. So, RMC, who we have right now. No, not really. I mean, RMC doesn't, I mean, they, they service, they're really more of a, I mean, big school, more of a, let's say.
Small, mid-sized.
Yeah, small, mid-sized school provider. And it does fluctuate some, but they, they don't require, they don't require the workers comp. So they do get schools to, who can't even give a Tazby, or if you've got out of Tazby.
Any questions on that? At this time, I will take a motion to approve the approval of property and casual insurance renewal. Final quote from RMC of Texas, 307,000, 307,989. I'll stand with that motion, Robert's seconded, all four. That's seven oh, thank you. Item B, consider approval of vendor for 2022-2023 fuel proposal.
Went out for fuel bids, received those back this week. Bobby's presenting this with a recommendation for Jackson Oil. You see, is this cost plus 10 cents on non ethanol unleaded gasoline, and cost plus 10 cent, 10 cents for diesel ultra low sulfur per gallon, which was the lower bid on both gasoline and diesel from the other proposal that was brought for us. So recommendations for Jackson Oil Co.
I think that's what it's been for a while, I think. Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept Jackson Oil as our fuel vendor for 2022-2023. I've got a second for that. Second by Scott, all four. Seven oh. Consider approval of cafeteria breakfast and lunch prices for 2022-2023.
As you remember, the last, like, two years, because of pandemic, breakfast and lunch was free across all three campuses. That changed a little bit this year. We're still a CEP campus at the elementary, so breakfast will remain free for the elementary campus, pre-K through four. If you're looking on the right column for this coming school year, breakfast, I think, increases five cents across each one for pre-K, or excuse me, for fifth through 12th grade, pre-K through, our second meal for pre-K through 12. Fifth through 12th grade goes to $2.05 for breakfast. The second meal for pre-K through 12 all the way is 2.40. Employee breakfast is 2.70, adult visitor is 3.20. Employee and adult visitor, the increase of 20 cents. Go to student lunch, elementary is still free of lunch. Fifth through 12th grade lunch goes up a nickel to 3.30. And a second lunch for all pre-K through 12 goes up a nickel to 3.65. Employee lunch goes up 65 cents to 4.90. And adult visitor goes up 75 cents to 4.40, 65 cents to 4.40, sorry. So that's the prices that we recommended to you tonight, for breakfast and lunch prices for this coming school year.
Any questions on that? I need a motion that we approve the 2022-2023 cafeteria breakfast and lunch pricing as presented. Motion made by Brooks. Seconded by Linda, all four. Seven oh, thank you. Consider approval of T test appraisers for 2022-2023, item G.
Good evening. You have before you in board book the list of appraisers that will be handling our T test formal evaluations for the 2223 school year. Just want to make a notation, you see in parentheses, Beth Deal, she could not get her training completed before the school year started. So she is actually completing her training in September. So she will be up for T test evaluation in, beginning October 1st. She can sit in with beginning of your conferences with either Ms. Williams or Mrs. Phillips. So she will be part of that, so that teachers that she's actually evaluating this year, she's actually starting that process with.
Any questions, Jan, around these appraisers? Okay, so let's take a motion on the, item G, approval of the T test appraisers for 2022-2023. Motion made by Linda, seconded by Robert, all four. Seven on that one. So H is consider approval of T test appraisal calendar for 2022-2023.
Now, before you is the T test appraisal calendar that will be for teachers under T test formal appraisal. And just as a reminder, the way that we have our board policy is a teacher is eligible to waive their formal appraisal if they are on a term contract and they did not receive an needs improvement dimension or domain score in that year. So any teacher that is with us for the first time, so all of our new hires this year, for example, are on a probationary contract, so they will all be under T test formal evaluation. But just in case you, you get any rumblings, principals try to put teachers on a rotation schedule. So you potentially could have a teacher that is a term contract, that is eligible for a waiver here, that the principal is asking to be on a T test full year observation, and the thinking on that is to stagger out teachers, so that you're not constantly, have a huge population of teachers that you're appraising, and the next year you don't have any, and then the next year you have a big group again. So they've tried to set a rotation schedule in place. So just as a reminder on that, and then this is the appraisal calendar, and this does come out from TEA on the requirements. So we have to have it within so many days before the end of the school year. Their pre-conference has to be so many days before their formal. Post-conference has to be so many days after, and so this just sets in those dates on the calendar for that time.
Any more questions on the T test appraisal calendar? And a motion that we approve it as presented. I'll make that motion. Seconded by Linda, all four. Okay. H, I, consider approval of T S appraisal calendar for 2022-2023.
So this is the principal and assistant principal evaluation calendar, and that is presented by Dr. McCullough throughout the year, as he's working with principals and assistant principals. So that is their formal evaluation process and formal calendar for.
Any questions, Jan, around the T test appraisal calendar? I'll take a motion on that one, approve it, as presented, by Robert. Seconded by Leanne, all four. All right, yay. Considering approved correct substitute pay scale for 2022-2023.
So, in your packet is the appropriate corrected substitute pay scale. I am mortified. With Dr. McCullough like come in a couple of times and asked me, and I was like, what is going on with the substitute pay? This is what we had last year. And he goes, but take a look, take a look. And so I get on there, I was mortified. So I am so sorry. So in the process of moving numbers over, obviously, we picked up the wrong pay scale. So this is the correct pay scale that we had in place at the end of last year, that we are asking for approval to replace the incorrect one in July's compensation. And I apologize for that, it's 100% on me. Sorry about that.
You know, the, the rate that was, that was on there was 60.89 instead of 89.
Correct.
So, that's correct.
Yes, and also the daily rate and the other position pay scales were also off, so this.
Okay. Any questions on our substitute pay scale? I guess it's on the website, look it out, we'll just look it up. And a motion that we approve the corrected substitute pay scale for 2022-2023. Motion made by Robert, seconded by Scott, all four. Seven oh. We're going to take item K and move it to, after we come back from closed session, that's a personnel action item, so we can discuss that in closed session. Item five, discussion item, STAR 2022 district reports.
So you have several different reports in board book, and so I just want to kind of go through and spotlight a few things on that. I do also want to say this is preliminary STAR data, so we will get formal, what I call formal. When our taper report comes out in November, and what that does is that's where they remove students who were not in fall snapshot, that went to another school district. Sorry, that were not in small, fall snapshot with us, but then tested with us. So those are in our summary reports. But this also doesn't include students that we had that went somewhere else and tested and left us after fall snapshot, that we would then regain their scores in here. So these will potentially fluctuate a little bit once we get the final taper, and they've removed those keys. So on the very first report, and I've, and I've got multiple views, because I like to see it a couple of different ways, is the STAR performance data for spring 2022, and this is showing your state as well as our district data. So I just made a notation in red of areas that we were below the state level. So if we were at the state level, then I did not color that, it was anywhere that we were falling below. Also, something else that I've started doing, that I'm starting this year. Also, something else that I've started doing, that I'm starting this year, is I wanted to break out the Algebra I because we do offer Algebra I at the middle school and at the high school. And on previous reports, we lump it all together. And just so that you can spotlight and see the great things that the middle school campus is doing, it's kind of skewing that data. So I wanted to break that out so that you see those separately. So out of those sixty-nine indicators, we had twenty-eight percent that were at performance levels below the state. So any questions on that particular one? Okay, the next one I wanna show you, because I really wanted to see kind of where we were growth-wise. So coming in here, and again, I kind of take the spring two thousand nineteen data, since that was my kind of starting, jumping off point. So it's kind of what I'm basing it on since we started our instructional improvement plan and put some things in place to hopefully really focus on academic performance. So that first spring two thousand nineteen that we used to kind of set our, our plan in place, we had thirty-nine areas that were below the state in spring of two thousand nineteen. So coming in to the twenty twenty-two year, and I wanna stress, we were in a pandemic, we were in remote learning. And so the growth that we have seen, I've just, I've been in awe of the commitment of our teachers and really staying focused on that. When a lot of districts took the excuses route and were like, oh, we can't really work with our kids, we can't stay focused on intervention. And that was not the route that Mount Vernon. We stayed very focused on kids, we stayed focused on what students needed. No matter what model we were in, whether it be remote, whether it be we were delivering packets to kids on school buses, the focus was working with kids. So in that, we had a huge shift in momentum to, now we're at nineteen areas below state performance. We're looking at about a fifty-one percent decrease in those areas, meaning overall fifty-one percent performance improvement in that three-year span. And just a reminder on that, change takes three to five years. And I always say it takes three to five years based on all the research with a focused team. So that's if everybody's on board, everybody is committed to the plan, everybody is moving forward, then you should see that growth and improvement. So I'm very blessed to see where we are at the three-year mark with that plan. Some things that really impact us looking at star is obviously teacher changes. For me, that's the most difficult thing to work with because we get momentum in a year and then if we lose teachers, we're starting all over again the next year. So the number one thing for us as a district with our kids is retaining our teachers. And that focus on making sure that the quality is there. So that is obviously a crucial piece for us. So any questions on that comparison? Again, I just kind of wanted to see it in the visual of those improvements. The next one, we're going to the green side. So I was like, all right, we've looked at the red. Now I really wanna spotlight the successes because to me, this was a great visual to show looking at state and regional data on where we sit as far as Mount Vernon and where, again, we had to be above state and regional, and I kind of looked at that for those targets. So in those categories of approaches meets and masters, we were sixty-two percent above state and regional marks as a school district. So again, very pleased with the improvement and the momentum that we've had. Okay, and then the last one in your packet, I started doing this for you guys last year, which was the longitudinal comparison. And again, these were the preliminary scores coming out through the state data portal for Mount Vernon and then went through Mount Pleasant and Silver Springs. So just getting an idea of how we are looking compared to districts around us. So obviously, larger districts, districts our size, different demographics. And then what I did was I went through and highlighted, again in green, anywhere we were above those schools. So you would have a visual of where, where trending at performance in districts around us. And then also their demographic makeup for that last taper year that was reported, which was the twenty-two year.
At the center of the board meeting, the campus principal will be shared with you, as I've shared with him, he'll be doing some informational reports for you. Part of that will be him sharing with you their, basically their campus plan and approach in regard to the student data that you see before you and their approach to how they're going to work toward that this year.
We did ask them to come up with two to three very campus specific goals based on the data that we've, and this was the same data that they received in the leadership meeting. And then also, what was their plan on, to focus on those two to three areas? As well as how they were gonna intervene with students who were struggling in that area or, or who needed that accelerated learning. I'm gonna use the word houseful forty-five, forty-five, so I hear it all the time. But how are we going to continue to move the students up that were still struggling? So those should be things that they're also presenting to you. And then the third thing that we asked of them to come up with a plan was how to expose good teaching to their teaching staff. Whether that be through, for example, an instructional round. So say Linda is a teacher on my campus that is doing a great job on student engagement. So we kind of challenged the principals to help expose other teachers with teachers on their campus. And whether that be through maybe a pair-up to kind of help grow them or bringing in onsite professional development specific to that, but really focused on how do we expose them? Cause we have a lot of teachers that have not taught anywhere but here. So their only exposure is here. So we have great teachers around us doing amazing things in the classroom. So focusing on how do we broaden that out utilizing teachers that are doing a great job here? But then also, how are we broadening them when they've never been anywhere else? To give them additional exposure, to kind of help give them more tools in their toolbox, to make them feel empowered. So, sorry, I have a lack of peace as well, okay?
Okay, information out of town, board financial reports, one ninety-nine, two forty, five ninety-nine.
Have those before you that shows you where we, where we are at the end of, or as of July? Any questions in regard to those?
And required board training.
The board training is, they'll send you an email. You're all required by September thirtieth to do the school safety training that has been put out. So once you get that done, you'll see Jessica, I, your certificate, we'll be sure that we get you credit for that. No, I already said, we didn't, if anybody else had, if you have, we'll, we'll work with you to get that correct. Also, on the board training, if you're interested, I know some of you were able to go to summer SLI, some of you who weren't. If you, you had the opportunity, if you'd like the Tasby, Tasby convention, September twenty-third through twenty-fifth. Will be at Henry B. Gonzalez Convention Center in September. If that would be something, be interested, be interested in, let us know very quickly if you would, we'll be sure to get you, get you pressured for that. Okay. Okay.
Time the board convenes in the closed session to discuss personnel matters for two, Texas government code, second five five one oh seven four. Three to five five three. Seven oh seven, board convenes back into open session. At this time, we're moved back to item K, forward for ratio items. Item K, consider approval of compensation plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented. To add a motion for that.
Motion to approve compensation plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Have a motion by Josh to set that, do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Do I have any other motions for item K?
I'd like to make a motion to do across the board two percent except for the one that we talked about in closed session.
Okay. Motion for two percent across the board. The one exception made by Leanne, do I have a second? Seconded by Linda. All four. Four. Oh, motion passes, so. Uh, excuse me, against. Very against, sorry about that. So four, four, very against, so that is a pass. Move on to better information items, personnel report, consider professional contracts as recommended by the superintendent.
We have Crimson Rose, elementary VAC teacher, Emma Teenan, elementary pre-K head start eight. Brooklyn Reader, cafeteria worker, Catherine Galu, high school family consumer science teacher. Jennifer McMillan, middle school secretary register, Cynthia Sprouse, cafeteria worker, and Bobby Cox, bus driver.
Okay, how about some reservations?
Reservations, since previous board meeting, Rebecca Cook, high school teacher, Catherine Glasgow, middle school eight. Ryan Ziller, high school teacher, and Yolanda Stanton, cafeteria worker.
Any further business? At seven oh nine in the PM, as many as a gender, what time is, seven thirty, seven thirty, twenty minutes to end, see you later.
I'm gonna get in pictures. You should got twenty minutes or beat the teacher, yep.